Hello, welcome to today's breathwork class. My name is Kimberly. I've been doing breathwork for 17 years, showing people from all over the world how to do breathwork. My favorite thing about this type of breathwork is it's very safe. It's very gentle, but it's fast and effective. So this morning I got a 30-minute breathwork session in. It inspired me to make a breathwork recording on stretching and doing breathwork at the same time. For today, just take your time, do your best to follow along with me. I'm gonna gently guide you into this breathwork session. And we're just gonna feel our body and we're gonna trust our body's guidance. So you're gonna do great. You can't mess it up. Let's get this going. Find a comfy place to lie down, pillows, blankets. You can put an eye mask on, grab a glass of water. Hit pause, and when you're ready, come back to the session. Okay, so getting, finding your nice cozy comfy spot. And we're gonna start by just taking in a few deep breaths. Inhaling in through the nose and out through the mouth. In through the nose and out through the mouth. One more deep breath in and exhale. And giving yourself a few minutes or so to adjust the volume, adjust the pillows. Now we're breathing in two, three, and exhale. Big breath in and exhale. And with each breath, we're just signaling to your body. We're getting it ready for the breathe, just giving back. And we're breathing in two, three, and softening on the exhale. And just finding your rhythm and your flow. And you might start to yawn a little bit, and that's just part of your body getting ready. Releasing. And let's take three deeper breaths in and exhale. Beautiful, just like that. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And you might start to kind of move your body, readjusting it. You may start to kind of wiggle around and just honor whatever your body needs. You don't have to be perfectly still. And we're breathing in two, three, and exhale. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And there might be some noises coming in or distractions. And you're just finding those deep breaths in. Just keep it going. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Eventually throughout the session, it'll start to calm. So just, we're just breathing in two, three seconds and softening the exhale. And as you breathe, you can start to breathe right into your chest and lower abdomen. This might be easy, or it might be hard to take a deep breath in and just kind of honor whatever, whatever your body can do. Again, we're just kind of warming everything up. We're breathing in two, three, and exhale two, three. Just being here is enough. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. You may start to feel the thoughts coming through and the hiccups in the body where your body carries stress, and just take three deeper breaths. And if you need to, as you inhale, just stretch your body. Opening everything up and exhale, just kind of letting it go. And big breath in two, three, and exhale. Don't worry, eventually your mind and body will settle in. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And maybe you're starting to feel some soreness in the body. And what you're gonna do is take another few deep breaths in and just start to make more room through your muscles, joints, as you inhale deeply. And big exhale, just starting to let go. Don't worry, the oxygen's working. Just keep breathing through. Big breath in two, three, opening up the joints, the muscles. And feel free to move your shoulders, your neck, and just keep working on your body. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Some people, when they do this, they're like, "Oh wow, why am I so fidgety?" And that's actually not a bad thing. It's not like when you're a kid and they're like, "Sit still." No, no, no. You can release a lot of anxiety and stressors through movement and the breath. And eventually, the mind and the body will settle in. So right now, we're just kind of moving and flowing with the body. Might feel good, might feel a little chaotic and loud. And let's just find our breath in two, three, and softening on the exhale. Wonderful, you're doing great. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. You are safe in your body. You've, you've got this. You can handle it. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And if you want, as you inhale for three seconds, you can stretch out your legs as you inhale. Big, deep stretch, inhale two, three, and exhale, letting it go. You're doing awesome. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Big breath in two, three seconds, nice deep inhale. And on the exhale, you can stretch and move, kind of finding your flow. This really helps to kind of distract how uncomfortable the body feels and all the layers. It kind of just helps us move through it. You're doing great. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Beautiful, yes, and now is a good time. Now that you're in the session, grab a sip of water, readjust your pillows, your blankets. And let's go for it. Make sure you're nice and cozy, comfy while we do this. You deserve to feel good in your body. You deserve peace. We're breathing in two, three seconds, in through the nose, out through the mouth. In through the nose, two, three, out through the mouth, two, three. Big breath in through the nose, two, three, out through the mouth. And you may start to feel sensations in the body. You may start to get cold or really warm. And we're just gonna keep gently breathing through it. The oxygen's working. You're doing amazing. You can't mess this up. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. If you can, breathe about 20% more. Make more room all the way down your spine. Fill your body up. Allow it to move and stretch out. It's quite activating doing this. You're doing great. You're gonna feel so relaxed once we're done. We're breathing in two, three, and exhale. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. Breathing in two, three, and exhale. It's safe to do hard things. This will get easier. We're breathing in two, three, and exhale. And just notice any symptoms in the body. If you have a slight headache or just whatever's going on, take three deep breaths. You're gonna open it up like a balloon and exhale, letting the pain go. And we're breathing really deeply in through the nose and let yourself feel the oxygen go behind your eyes. And exhale. If I'm going too fast, slow it down. Take your time. Give your body a chance to catch up with itself. You've been going through a lot. You've had to be really strong. So just, your body has a different flow and a different timing. So just honor whatever your body needs right now. You are safe. You are loved. You are protected. It's all gonna be okay. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Breath in two, three, and exhale. If your body feels like it needs to stretch, you can move your legs out as you inhale two, three. Or your arms, whatever. Breathing in two, three, and exhale. And as you stretch, use a really strong, slow, deep inhale to go through your muscles and your joints. Beautiful. This will create more flow, more blood flow, better circulation. Safe to breathe. It's safe to open the body up. Good breath in two, three, and exhale. And you may start to feel heaviness, tightness, tingling in the body. And that just means the oxygen's opening up more circulation, more flow. You're safe. Big breath in two, three. Nice, deep breath in and exhale. And you can breathe a lot deeper than your mind gives you credit for. And so let's just take a few minutes or so. And you're gonna inhale for four or five seconds. Here we go. We're gonna breathe in. Good job. And we're gonna slow that down a little bit more in. And you can really feel when you inhale that deeply, it starts working its way through your organs. So we're gonna breathe in for one, two, three, four, five, and exhale. And just a few more deeper breaths like that. Let's breathe in for one, two, three, four, five, making more room. And exhale. Good job. Couple more left. And one more deeper breath in. Oof, that was big. And we're going back to the three-second inhale. We're breathing in two, three, and softening on the exhale. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. Doing great. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. You are safe. Your body is safe. Let's take another three deeper breaths in, two, three, and exhale two, three. Don't worry, eventually your mind and body will settle in a little bit more. We're just taking this one breath at a time. And sometimes the thoughts can mess with you. And they can say, "Oh, this isn't working. It's not happening for me." But just trust me. Just hang out. Keep breathing along with me the best you can. And you will start to feel a difference. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. So it's kind of like this practice of just showing up anyway, no matter what our brain says. And we're just gonna keep breathing through it. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. We don't know what's gonna happen next. And we're just gonna keep breathing through it. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Just giving your body, your brain, your organs, your hands, your toes. Just giving you the love that you need right now. The support you need right now to get through. It's a very big chapter in your life. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. Breath in two, three, and exhale. You are safe. It's all gonna be okay. Your family's gonna be okay. You are protected. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And yawning is good. Stretching is good. Sometimes these sessions are easy. Sometimes you can really feel how much your body's carrying or what you're really going through emotionally. Take your time. You may get sweaty. You may get cold. You may get hot. Just keep breathing through the layers. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Your body is calming. It's safe to be calm. It's safe to relax. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. You are safe. Your body is safe. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. The thoughts, the feelings, the emotions, they are innocent. You are innocent. We're breathing in two, three, and exhale. And on your next few deep breaths in, feel free to stretch your arms as you inhale. And exhale. Twist and turn your body however you need to. Stretch your legs out. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And it's safe to let the body know that it's safe to let go. It doesn't have to carry all these burdens, all these stressors, triggers. None of that stuff matters. We don't have to attach. We don't have to hold it in our bodies anymore. This is just the process of life. And just learning how to not take everything personally. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. Breath in two, three, and exhale. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. And right now, we don't have to have anything figured out. We're just breathing and allowing the breath to move through your body. Let's take three deeper breaths, opening up your joints, your muscles, your organs. Just letting it go. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. It's okay to feel. It's okay to feel things. Your body is innocent. The sensations and feelings, the emotions are innocent. It's not your fault. Big breath in two, three, and exhale. You're doing great. You're releasing a lot. You're releasing more than you know. So take your time. Grab a sip of water. We're breathing in two, three, and exhale two, three. Move your body however you need to. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. It's a big one. The body's doing a lot for us right now. We're going through a lot right now. So just giving yourself some love and forgiveness. I'm willing to forgive myself for being hard on myself. I am safe. My body is safe. I am protected. It's all gonna be okay. Safe to let those things go. And with each breath that I breathe, I give my body full permission to gently let go of any stored stressors, triggers, emotions, whatever it's carrying. Incestial, generational. In this lifetime, doesn't matter. Safe to let it go. Big breath in two, three seconds. Nice, deep breath in. And exhale. Big breath in two, three, and exhale two, three. Big breath in, two, three, and exhale, two. Big breath in, two, three, and exhale, two. If you can, get 20% more on the inhale, breathing in. You're more than welcome to wiggle your body, shake if you need to. And as you shake and wiggle around, big breath in, two, three. Big breath in, two, three. Good job. Breath in, two, three, and exhale, two, three. Big breath in, two, three, and exhale. And just honoring this time and this space. Honoring your body right now, your heart, your connection, your knowingness. Honoring the layers and the process of the mind and the body. You're doing great, big breath in, two, three, and exhale. Breathing in through the nose, two, three. And just softening on the exhale. Doing great. Big breath in, two, three. Breathing in, two, three, and exhale. It's safe to trust my body. My body knows what to do. Oxygen is working. I deserve to feel good in my body. Allowing yourself to be tired. Allowing yourself to take a break.